Good evening. Welcome to the Milton Board of Selectmen. Tonight, we have a special meeting with our architects on the East Milton Square Reconstruction Project, which is Howard Stein Hudson, as well as our town planner, Bill Clark. As many of you know, before we begin tonight, as many of you know, on Sunday, the town of Weymouth experienced a serious tragedy where one of their police officers and an innocent victim were killed in a horrific crime. And we're a community who has not been immune to our own tragedies and our own violence. In memory of Officer Michael Chesner from the Weymouth Police Department and Vera Adams, the resident who was killed in that shooting on Sunday morning, I'd like to begin this meeting tonight with a moment of silence and their memories. Thank you. So, going to begin, I'm going to ask our town planner, Mr. Clark, to come forward. And tonight, we're going to talk, we're not at the 75 percent level yet, but we've had a design submitted to us as far as the park area that goes with the project. I do want to say that we had a conference call this morning, Mr. Dennehy, myself, Mr. Clark, with John McVan from Federal Highway, who was very enlightening on this and answered a lot of questions that I had anyway, as far as things that have come to the board. But with this, I'll hand it to Mr. Clark, and then I know there'll be questions, I think we'll do is go with some of the board members that have whatever questions they have, and then we'll accept any public input or comment. This is just an update of where we're at on this. Just the one final thing I do want to say before I hand it over to them is, this is a traffic instruction project. It's not a deck project. The primary goal of this project is to enhance safety and the flow of traffic in East Milton. And that's what the majority of the money that has been awarded for this is targeted for. The deck and any landscaping design that goes with it is a secondary component of that. And with that, I will hand the reins to Mr. Clark. Thank you.
Thank you. As the chairman just said, this is a transportation project. For as much as everybody has been concentrating on the eye candy in the middle, this is all about the transportation needs in and around East Milton Square. What we have is, we have with us Howard Stein Hudson, our consulting engineering team tonight, Bridgette Myers, Mark Revolisi, we have from Halverson, Rich and, thank you, Houghton. He's our landscape architect for this project. He has the, probably the hardest job in trying to design what that eye candy's going to look like, because that's the limited budget that we've given him. We do want to talk about, and we want to show, all of the transportation needs that we have here. When we look at it, everything that's in gold is what we're looking at for transportation needs. We've actually taken and looked further. We've looked down Granite Ave, because we know there's another signal down at Granite and Squanton that's going to be done this summer. How does that relate to this? That's taken into account. The potential to put a light at Adamson's Quantum, again, we're looking at all of this. We're trying to take and make coordination on all of these pieces. We're looking at Edgehill Road to be a one-way. We're looking at adding that lane to Boulevard so that we can move cars through here. We are not going to take and make the level of service in this area increase to an A. That's just not going to happen. That's not what this project ever started to be. It's to increase the level of service for safety, and it is all about public safety. I'm going to let Bridgette go through all of the different pieces. We'll come back and we'll have questions as we go through the program itself.
My name is Bridgette Myers from Howard Stein Hudson, and I'm just going to pick up where Bill left off on this presentation, so, as he was just going over the project limits through the square, Granite Avenue, Bryant Avenue, Boulevard, Edgehill Road, Bassett Street, and Adam Street. And this is the same project limits that we've been dealing with through the whole design process. And just to go over the transportation improvements, which are the big part of this project, we're going to be upgrading all of the traffic signal equipment at all of the intersections within the square. There'll be a new traffic signal controller, vehicle detection at all of the signals, pedestrian countdown indications for all the crosswalks, and APS push buttons. There'll be a new signal at Bassett Street, which will be a full signal, new signing and striping throughout the whole square, including adding an additional lane on Boulevard Street. And we're also realigning the slip ramp to make it so, make the turns along the slip ramp a little tighter, so that cars are forced to slow down when going around those corners. We're also making several bicycle and pedestrian improvements throughout the square, in the form of bicycle lanes and separated bicycle lanes, a shared use path going through the deck, all-new ADA-compliant sidewalks and ramps. We're reducing crosswalk lengths where we can by using bump outs of curbs, and we'll be doing the pedestrian upgrades at all the signals. A little history of the timeline, where we are, we had our 25 percent design submittal in December 2014. We had our 25 percent design public hearing here back in September 2015. Throughout the time, we also went through a lengthy environmental review and permitting process called a FOREF programmatic evaluation, and that was when we were dealing with looking at parking on the deck, which was shot down by FHWA and EEA when they responded. And then we attended a Board of Selectmen meeting in June 2017, with another public information meeting in September 2017. In the more recent timeline, we've had attendance at a few Board of Selectmen meetings, one in October, where we were asked to look at different options to evaluate if there was anything we could do, to look at parking in the area of Adam Street that's on the deck today. We're obviously very limited with where you can enter and exit that area, given the parkland stipulations from FHWA. So, we did not recommend any of those alternatives, mostly because they would involve exiting onto the slip ramp too close to the intersection. We then were at the Board of Selectmen meeting in December, talking about the updated traffic counts that were done in September. And we just recently were at the Board of Selectmen meeting last month to give a first look at that landscape design concept. This is kind of what I just went over, but a little more review of that October 2017 meeting. So, when we looked at those recommendations, or the options for parking in the Adam Street area, the safety concern was cars exiting onto the slip lane. The only way that they could do that is if it was up too close to Bryant Ave, and we just thought that was too close to the signal to make a safe situation there. The other thing that was talked about at this meeting was that the board did not want to convert the entire deck into green space, especially that Adam Street area, because there was just concern about adding to the protected parkland area. So, the conclusion that we all came to there was that we would maintain the area of Adam Street, kind of curb-to-curb where it is now, and we're not going to be converting that to green space. It'll still be utilized in the landscape design, but it'll be a hardscape surface at the same level as the green space, but it'll be used more like a very wide shared use path. It'll be used for bicycles, pedestrians, and we're going to look at restricted vehicle access for maintenance, emergency vehicles, or if there's events on the deck. The 2017 December meeting, when we talked about the new traffic counts that we did in September, these pretty much showed what everyone already anticipated, that traffic has increased over the past three years, and in particular, the Adam Street eastbound, with cars continuing down Bryant to get on 93 South, increased at a rate of 1.8 percent per year. And the Granite Ave northbound increased at 2.3 percent per year. And that was, it was outside of the normal peak hours, which were 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. It was 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. So, what that shows us is that the peak hour is spreading, you know, people are leaving earlier. And those volumes stayed pretty steady throughout the whole day. There wasn't a big drop in the middle of the day. So, through all these meetings that we went to and discussions with the town, going back and forth about looking at Adam Street, one of the things that we came to a conclusion of is that we were going to no longer look at this idea of possibly opening Adam Street that had come back and forth through various people. And it's just not recommended for this project, because it would, that's a pretty large design change, and it would put us back at 25 percent design. We couldn't just continue where we are right now. That would really kill the schedule and not be good. Mast dot does not recommend that idea as well. So, as I just explained, the Adam Street area will be used as a hardscape area, won't be converted into green space, and it'll have access for bicycles, pedestrians, and restricted vehicles. And that's kind of what led us to this concept. We just took our old concept, and we left that area of Adam Street in the gray, and this highlights all of the transportation improvements that I was describing earlier. The blue there, what you see is all the bicycle lanes, the protected bicycle lanes going through the areas. You can see the bumped-out curbs for the shortening of the crosswalks, and it just really improves the connectivity in that, you know, Adam Street area, where it'll be kind of a shared use, multi-use path, really will help increase the connectivity for people going across both sides of the deck.
Say those ones again?
Sure.
With that other picture.
Yes. Just going to reiterate the transportation improvements. So, we've got the improved, the upgraded, all-new traffic signal equipment at all four intersections throughout the square. We have, we'll have the vehicle detection, the pedestrian countdown indications, the APS push buttons at all the crosswalks, the new full signal at Bassett Street, the new signing, striping, an additional lane on Boulevard Street. You can see the three lanes shown there. And here, you can also see the realignment of the slip ramp, which is called Ramp A, on the plan right there.
I have one quick question. Doesn't the signal at Church and Adams, isn't that tied to this set as well, if I'm correct?
It isn't right now. It was, and it's not right now, because we had a fire in it.
Right.
We took it out.
Will it remain tied to it when these improvements are done?
We can. The new technology will match up with this technology here.
Okay. Thanks. I'm good, Bridgette.
So, given that concept we just had, which is where we took and we brought on Halverson, given what we knew, where we left off there, and then with discussions with the town about what we're looking at in this landscaped area, and this will be an area that'll supplement all the traffic and safety improvements that we're making. Some of the things that we discussed about, discussed were having a big usable open area, a big, kind of usable grassed area, some trees and shrubs on the perimeter to act as a buffer. There was talk about a gazebo or pavilion that would be a possible donation from the Chamber of Commerce, which had been talked about in the past. There is a 300th anniversary clock that was set to be placed in this area, and there is preference to have that scene from Granite Ave. There, we'll be relocating all the existing monuments that are in the deck right now. And there's also going to be a donated custom bike rack that'll be placed in this area, and we would obviously be placing a new holiday tree as well, which led to the creation of this conceptual design that Halverson prepared for us. And so, I'll turn this over to Rich, so he can just give a little further explanation of this concept.
And as Bill had mentioned, we've had the opportunity to work with Halverson Hudson and the town to develop a conceptual landscape plan that places some of the design elements that Bridgette had mentioned within the landscape design area in association with the transportation improvements. So, I wanted to talk about, a little bit about the configuration of the design elements that are on this plan. So, if we start by looking on Granite Street, we've incorporated a pedestrian path that's set back a little bit from the street and creates a little bit more of a streetscape atmosphere that plays off the commercial area side of the site. We've also incorporated a bike lane pass-through that follows diagonally up the site to create a stronger connection to Adam Street for bicycles, and it's a multi-use corridor. It's the area that would be a hardscape area for flexible activities if there were to be vehicles for events or otherwise, that could be a hardscape area that could be utilized with removable bollards. As we, as we move toward the center of the space, we've reduced the number of entrances and exits to what's there now in an effort to increase the safety. There had been concerns about, you know, children, you know, running off the site, and right now, there's some retaining walls that reduce visibility from cars and come up to about, you know, five feet off the sidewalk or so. So, this landscape concept is an effort to reduce some of those exit points to increase the safety, while also incorporating the desire lines for where people want to be traveling and crossing the street. And we've also created some nodes of interest for some of the design elements that have been mentioned as potentially being able to be donated or relocated within the space, including the streetscape clock, which is located close to the fire department along Granite Avenue, as well as some other artifacts that are placed as points of interest. Also incorporated in the plan are some seating areas and areas to stop. And the, a primary component of this concept is that it would look good whether people are within or just as a landscaped area, that would look great as for vehicles passing by, and creates a very attractive space on top of a hard deck space. So, I think that, I think that hits the highlights of what this concept exhibits. And I'll turn it back to Bridgette, I think, to conclude the presentation.
And the last slide I have here is just looking at some of the numbers we have right now for costs. The total federal earmarks that right now are intended to pay for the construction of this project equals 1.9 million. The state will match 20 percent of that, bringing it up to about 2.34 million. Looking at our 25 percent design estimate, which is what we have, what we're going off of right now, but using today's unit prices, that was bringing up the total transportation improvements to just under $2 million. So, that would leave us right now with $360,000 to work with for landscape improvements. That's not a large budget as far as landscape improvements go. We're going to be looking at evaluating additional funding sources, but it'll be, you know, looking to use what funding we have and using Rich's concept to see what we can, you know, get into this landscaped area to really make some good improvements. It may not look exactly like this concept, it's just a concept plan right now, but we'll have a much better idea as we move forward to 75 percent design.
We have had all kinds of comments coming in by email that have different people's ideas of what we could put on there. We've had requests for a skating area, requests for a splash pad that, you know, kids could go and go under the, under fountains. We've had requests for fountains. We've had requests for different benches out there. And we really don't want to take and put all that much more water up on top of the deck itself. Water has a problem of seeping through. The more it seeps through, the bigger the headache we have. Our biggest issue is going to be money for doing these improvements. What you have here is reusing a lot of the trees that are already out there. There's probably more trees that have to come down, will have to be replaced. We have a very Spartan budget. We have a very Spartan design. We haven't added a whole lot of things that Rich would like to see in there. We keep pulling back and saying we don't have the money. We need to find more money to address some of these issues. Where we have that large swath that was Adam Street, it's going to be at a level surface to the green space that's on either side. Chances are, we're going to have it so that it's a, some type of a stamped surface, so that it looks like it belongs. It could, in the 50 years from now, it could be used for transportation purposes, but right now, it's going to be used for people walking on it, for people biking on it. If you want to walk in that area, you can, we could have the art center go and put displays out there. It gives them a platform that they could take and work from. I know that there are other questions out there that people are like, you know, just open up, open it up to where it was before. We're not going backwards. The idea is to improve the pedestrian safety. It's to improve the traffic flow that's down there. It's to make it easier for you to park in there now. If we open it up, all it does is speed everything up. It moves more cars through at a faster rate. That's not the issue here. The issue here is to make this a, it is a, the square is our destination point. We're looking to make it extremely safe, that if kids from the east side of the highway want to take and walk to Cunningham Collycutt, they want to walk to Cunningham Pool, they want to walk to St. Agathas, we've given them a way to get across all of this traffic. We've given them safety islands. We've given them the latest technology that they can get across, and it will be at a safer rate. We have taken and we've used the latest traffic counts. We did them last September. We waited till everybody came back. We didn't do them early September. We did them mid to late September, so that we knew everybody was back, school was in session. We've tried to use the latest numbers for all of this, whether it's for traffic, whether it's for the numbers for the construction pieces. We're constantly looking at all of these numbers, trying to get the most out of the project that we can. I know that somebody has a question about open Adam Street going westbound. If you open Adam Street going westbound, that means going from Quincy going to St. Agathas. That means that I now have to change the traffic flow at Wood Street. That isn't going to happen, because now I have traffic coming into that same westbound lane. You can't do that. That would, that would mess that whole thing up. It's not set up to do that. I'm trying to think of another one.
I have a question for Mark. So, I think, because we have several members of the board, and I just want to go to a question that we talked about earlier, that will really, I want to go advanced, two years from now, and I want, I want to talk about what East Milton, the efficiency and effectiveness of East Milton Square after this is done.
He can come up and answer it.
That's why I want to.
Sure.
So, basically, because a lot of people, I think for me, I'm 10 years into this now, between my time as police chief and chair of the Traffic Commission, now on the board for two years, is that I think a lot of people can't understand, there's no miracle, but if you could just explain to them the way you did for me, and I asked you some hard questions today, about how you see the effectiveness, safety, and efficiency of East Milton Square when this is done, as compared to how it is today.
Sure. No problem. Well, it's no secret, there is a volume issue, as Bridgette had mentioned earlier to you, with traffic through the square. The improvements are not going to make every one of these signals operate at a level of service A, where everyone has free flow, and they rarely stop at a green, and every, they have to meet a red light, and it's all time. What it's going to do is optimize all the signals, so they talk to one another, so that way, traffic gets pulled through the square in a manner that processes more traffic. It'll still be at a slower pace. It'll still have a level of service. Bridgette, do you remember what the level of service was? It's probably going to be around like the C or the D level of service. But the goal of the project was to optimize the signals, create the new technology, so the signals can talk to one another. So, that way, you're not just stuck at a red light for the sake of being stuck at one. It'll have, it'll be dealing with the actual volumes that are out there during the time of day. Most importantly, though, beyond the volume and the processing of the traffic, it's the safety improvements. As everyone knows today, the square is very difficult to navigate, whether you're on foot or on a bike. There are sidewalks that are narrow, there are utility poles that are in the middle of the way, there are crosswalks that are missing. The connectivity from one side of the square to the other just really isn't there. Nobody really wants to use as a destination. And with the funding from the Federal Highway Department and the review from Mast dot, we're meeting the healthy transportation policies for bike and pedestrians, we're meeting the complete streets policies, and work updating all the traffic equipment and the signals in order to optimize operations. This project will have major benefits for the square. Taking into account all the future volumes and the recent traffic data that we just updated in 2017, it'll make this place operate better, not, it won't be free flow, but it will all be an enormous improvement in safety for all users of transportation in the square. And then, in order to augment those new desire lines, those new connections that we're providing through the center of the square, the landscaping amenities are going to make this a place where people want to come and use. And so, and the palette that we're creating for you, with the meager budget and perhaps some additional funds, is not going to hamstring anything that you want to do in the future. It'll provide you a palette to provide destinations for people to come to the square and make it a place to be.
Thank you. So, anything additional you want to, before I open up the questions?
I think I'm good. Is that all your questions, Jim?
Oh.
I know you're going to give me another list of questions, and I'm going to take those and either answer myself or have the rest of the team answer them for me.
Richard, should I go ahead?
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, Jim Coyle is a resident of East Milton Square. He's been very interested in this project. Unfortunately, Jim broke his hip, and so Jim couldn't be here tonight. So, he had a number of questions, one of which was the question that Bill mentioned on the westbound traffic. He had a number of questions, and if, in addition to that one, and it's probably more efficient for me, just to give you that, email that list, and then if you all can help out answering those questions for Jim, I think that'll probably be the better way to go, and hopefully, he'll be back up on his feet and can participate at the next, at the next meeting. So, I think that, I think that does it for Jim's questions.
Good.
Any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Well, because I'm new to this, I've been trying to understand, and I think that the presentation, what I understand is that we're not here to look at how to optimize things, so that we do have a freer flow, but this is more about working within this budget that people have been talking about on just to pull traffic through, get pedestrians safer space, and to re-landscape, to help draw people in. But I guess I have questions. I thought that the landscaping was needed, because the deck had to be, the waterproofing had to be fixed.
Yes.
Is that correct?
We think that, we think that the deck is, that the waterproofing underneath should be fine. Mast dot has, is suspect of a few spots under there. As we move forward with this, we have to have a structural engineer come in and look at the certain components. When they look at it, should that lining have a problem, that's not our problem, that's a Mast dot problem. Anything under that, anything from that membrane down belongs to- Anything under that, any, anything from that membrane down belongs to Mast Dot. We have to look at the membrane, we don't have to look at what's under it. Mast Dot does. So that's not our budget constraint, that's not part of our project. Our project has never been that we're looking at free flow in the whole area. We are looking to do some, some level of service increases, but we know, we know and we knew that we never were going to reach level A, that we knew that we were going to be able to increase these. Originally, we had two or three level service F components to, to these legs, and I know that when we changed the traffic pattern, we changed those Fs to Ds and, and Cs. We know that we're not going to go back to an F. We know we're trying to get away from anything that's a D. We are looking at Cs. Some of them even are better, but it's peak periods of time that have those level of service. It's all, it's all a volume number. It's not a, it's not, it's a volume number in a limited capacity area, and that's our problem. We do not have four lanes to give them, we're bringing things down to two lanes. We had one lane before. Now we've got, right now, Boulevard, our new plan would have three lanes on Boulevard. Currently, it's two. We have two lanes going, Adam Street going west onto Granite. We have two lanes now. Before, we had one, and we had traffic going two ways. We have one lane in each direction there. We now have two. So we have a bigger queuing area, we have a capacity to take and put more cars through the area. We are taking and working all those numbers through the new lights. The new lights here are, they talk to one another via computer, not somebody going down into the basement. So this, it's, it's bringing the technology up to today's standards, not trying to run on 50-year-old technology.
Right. So what does a C look like?
So, in an urban environment?
Looks a lot better than an F.
Yeah, well, in a, no, you know.
Sounds better, but I, I don't understand.
Everyone go, everyone went to school, and, you know, an F's a failing grade, right? But when it comes to traffic operations, there are grades A through F. And in an urban environment, like in the city of Boston, or in a, or a city center condition like we have here in East Milton Square, it's quite normal to, to see Cs, Ds, and Es, and sometimes even Fs, in, in operations in, you know, major corridors, because of the volumes of traffic. And these are during the peak hours. This isn't all day long and overnight, this is just the peak hours, as Bill had mentioned. So yeah, normal delay, the, 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 the level of service grade is dependent on the length of queue at the signal. And so, I don't have the table with you, I apologize, I'm not our, the traffic engineer on the job, but we can get that information for you and share what, what a typical queue would be like for a level of service C, but I can almost guarantee you that you have a lot of Cs and Ds already in East Milton that nobody really bats an eye at.
I'm, I'm just, I just think people would benefit from understanding what the difference is between an F and even a D or, or a C, and I, I don't know.
I, I apologize, we did not bring all of that information with us tonight, but we had all of that in the previous presentations, and when we went through the actual concepts of the traffic. I, I know you mentioned you were new to the board, we can come back with all that information for you if need be.
If I might, Ms. Collins, I've had conversations with Jack Calabro, where he's had to reset some of the timing. Northbound on Granite Ave, not too long ago, was a seven-minute wait. That's probably the F you're talking about.
Yes.
Where cars are queued up all the way past Compass Kitchens, and it takes seven minutes to get them through the square, so that.
And part of the reason for that is the technology running traffic flow, that the signalization technology is so old and archaic, and, and this is, five years ago I was there, he couldn't gain two seconds on a signal, you know, a two-second change, like, he couldn't even get it, two additional seconds. So, that's where people don't understand, and I try to use simple terms, is the way I've come to understand, is the difference between a square black and white television and a 60-inch high-def TV today, it's just, it's apples and oranges, it's that much of a benefit. We're talking, we're so antiquated in our signalization and effectiveness, the way we run traffic operations at Square, it's just, it's screaming for this upgrade.
Bill, what's the, the anecdote you, you always use for the, to make the signal timing changes, right? You have to have someone in the basement of the fire station?
Yes.
And someone out with a stopwatch?
Yes.
And they have to be talking to one another? Okay, I made this change, how long did it actually take the queue to, to, to go through?
That's true.
And, you know, that's not how signals operate today. They all talk, work computerized, you have the indications in the road for where the queues are, they talk to one another, they turn the greens, they give it extra time, they pull people through, and that is the optimization you don't have, and that's why you're getting seven-minute queues to get through lights. That won't happen in the future condition.
Some of the other issues here, we have, we're looking at gaining areas, like, the lights up at St. Agathas and Brook Road have an effect down here on Granite Boulevard. If I don't have a gap up there, I have a problem down here. So, I literally am changing every single one of those lights on its own, not talking to one another, I have to go and change this one, and then go change that one. There isn't enough coordination between the lights. As Mike just said, jackets up and changes St. Agathas, and we're watching St. Agathas to see what it does to the Wood Road Extension. We're watching that St. Agathas to see what it does here in front of the post office. Are we giving ourselves enough gap that we can now let cars come off the Wood Street Extension, get in front of the traffic that, that's being held at St. Agathas, so that we can get them to go around the corner, whether it's to go up Ed Chill, or to go down Bryant? So, all those lights are talking to one another, and we don't have a, we don't have a modern, modern system to do it, we're trying to do that. I know that this week, we actually have our consultant out there working on timing some of these lights, because we had to put in a new head, so we may see, next week, the week after, we may see a little bit of a change out there, because there, there is a new controller head going in. But we're constantly playing with these lights, trying to, because we have a seven-minute wait here, we're trying to get that, move it up, so it's not seven, we're trying to get it to five. We're constantly tweaking, steal from one place, you're giving it to someplace else, so.
Right. Okay, thank you. The, the other thing I've gotten quite a few emails on is the change in the park from passive to a more active use, and was wondering if anyone had anything to say about that.
They're probably 50/50 on, nobody's, actually, nobody's saying, there's a very limited number saying that they want a park so that it is, they don't want to stop there. We do have people saying they want to go there, we have others saying they'll go through there. We have more people saying, you know, why do we have a park? I think that's the biggest one, is a park, why are we putting a park on top? We didn't put the park up there, that's not what this project has ever been looking at to take and put the park up there. We're working with what we have. We do not have the ability to take and remove a park. We're trying to do the best we can with what, the, the green space that we have now. We're trying to make some improvements to it that would allow more use of that particular area, make it more connectivity between the bike and ped accommodations, to make those safer, to make it be able to be used for some multipurpose things. I said the, the art center before, to be able to have it as a, as a potential gathering place. We know that the, the sound on the southern part, which would be the part on the left, versus the sound on the right, are two different things. The highway is higher on the left, as you look at that picture, the highway is probably eight feet below Boulevard, and if you go to the other end, it's probably 20 feet down to the top of the trucks for, on, on the slip ramp side. So, the road just tips in that direction. Makes it quieter.
Could I add a little bit about the waterproofing?
That's what you're here for.
Yeah, so, just back to the original question about the waterproofing, at our 25% design submittal, Mast DOT did indicate that they have a leak in that structure. It drips onto I-93, and it freezes in the middle of the winter and creates a highway safety issue. So if we're going to be doing some excavation for installing signal foundations, we're going to be making some improvements to the park, they're going to want us to investigate that and see if we can find that leak. Now, that doesn't mean that, you know, it could be one leak in that entire bridge deck, that doesn't mean we're going to unpeel the entire onion just to find it. That's why we have a structural engineer on board. Gil Engineering is going to assist us with the coordination with Mast DOT. They're going to try and pinpoint that location and where that leak is coming from, with a best-case scenario of making probably a spot repair for the, the membrane. Worst-case scenario is that the whole thing has to get replaced. I don't really see why that would be, but that's what, that's the issue with the membrane. It's a known leak, creates a highway safety issue, especially in the winter, and they would like that evaluated before we do full construction here and put everything back with a nice pavement and a fresh coat of paint on everything.
Right. Well, that, that's helpful, because they think there was a concern that we were pulling up the entire park, everything was going to be redone underneath, and, and that there was only one way to fix leaks, and it doesn't sound, it sounds as if there are a range of things that could be done, depending upon what the issue is.
I'm not a structural engineer, but I'm nearly certain the only way to fix the leak is from the top down.
Right.
Yeah, we'll have to fix the rubber, the, the waterproofing membrane that sits on top of the concrete bridge deck that tries to keep the water from going through into the bridge. And so, where that location is, where that leak is, we'll try and identify that.
Just to follow up to Mrs. Collins's question, if it is that serious, and we did have, we do have to pull the whole thing up, this will be on them to pay for this now, is that correct?
Correct. That's where we would talk to the DOT, and they know that they have a leak, and if we've identified what the actual issue is, and they concur with it, then they would be, there would be assistance.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's part of our air rights agreement, that the deck surface is their, that the bridge deck surface is theirs. Above that is us.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I can't tell you the number of emails I've gotten about air quality, and I just was curious, have we done an air quality study in the area?
We have not.
So, this came up, it, not the last Board of Selectment meeting, but the one before that, I believe, and we had Mast Dot Environmental, along with the project manager here in attendance. May even have been two Board of Selectment meetings ago.
Last public info meeting.
Public, alright, so the last public info meeting that we had. And that did come up, and Mast Dot did say that it does not require an, an air pollution study, I mean, yeah, an, an air quality study, because the way that the highway operates, it creates a, even though this is not, the deck is not long enough to create a quote tunnel underneath, the way the traffic flows and the way that the air quality from the highway escapes around, it goes up and around the bridge deck, and that what you have here is an urban environment with a lot of volume, that's no different than any other urban intersection in any city in Massachusetts, and that it's not a project that is directly impacted by air quality from the highway.
I, I suspected that was going to be the answer, just sitting in post office square park, I mean.
Yeah.
But, but I wasn't thinking about the Commonwealth and their responsibility, but I, I think that people's concern is, is the, the flow of traffic right around the park and converting it into a more active use. I think people don't see this as an urban environment, and I think that's where that, that question has come from.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I have a few questions. First one is about the schedule. So when we were, when you were here last, we had some concern about January of 2019 for the advertising deadline, and I know that was, you know, concerned, members of the board, concerned the public, it was reported in the newspaper, and then we found out the next day, the federal highway approval came through. Can we get confirmation that we're still on track for the January 2019 advertising deadline?
Yes, we're on track for the advertising deadline. What was not factual is that if we miss the January advertising date, you do not lose any of your earmarks. The earmarks are tied to a specific date on the calendar, and the first one expires in September of 2019, correct, Bridget? So, if it does slip to February or April for advertising, that's not an issue, other than the job is just going to go out to construction a few months later. The earmarks are not tied to that, but we are on schedule for January.
I guess, Mark, that, and your response brings up the same issue that we had at the last discussion, which is, you know, the reason we, in the summer of 2017, made the decision not to re, not to pursue reopening Adam Street, was because we were told that that would set us back, we'd have to go back to the drawing board, go back to the 25% design stage, start all over again, and that would jeopardize the January 2019 advertising deadline, and that would jeopardize us receiving the federal earmark. So, I think what we're hearing now is a little bit different than what we heard then, and even hearing that, that we had a year and a half, we couldn't consider reopening Adam Street, still amazes me that it would, a year and a half, we couldn't have achieved all of those milestones, but that's what we were told, that's, that's the decision that was made.
I do disagree with that. It was made clear that the earmarks would be in jeopardy, and the funding would be at jeopardy, not tied to the advertising date. And if we do go back, and we do go ahead and open up Adam Street, you're starting over from square one, and square one was three years ago in 2014, and working through that process again, you'd have to go through a 25% design, and you would certainly not make the September 2019 date for the, the earmark that would first expire.
All right, well, we may have to just agree to disagree on that, because my, my recollection of this was that the, the decision, that the earmark was tied to the January 2019 advertising deadline, but that's it.
The reason why we picked January also is because we advertised in the newspaper with Mast Dot, and their standard procedure is four months, 120 days, before they put the entire contract together for the contractors, and then they issued the notice to proceed to the contractor to begin construction. So you want to be able to advertise in a month, preferably the winter, so that way, when spring breaks, the contract is ready to go and has a full construction season to utilize the good weather. So that's why January was the date we were looking for, but the earmarks were, have always been tied to September.
Okay. It may have just been a communication issue, but at this point, the big issue for me right now is confirmation that we're, we're still on target for the advertising deadline, and you've said we are.
Yes, we are.
So I appreciate that. Second question, I think this is more of an issue for Bill. My real concern, going back last summer and last fall on this project, has been, if we can't reopen Adam Street now, what I want to make sure is that the town, whether it's five years from now, 50 years from now, that the town has the future flexibility to reopen Adam Street when it might make sense to do so. So, you know, we've, we've, we're at the point now where we have the area being treated as pavers on the landscape plan, which was not originally what we had, but recently, we've had that, so I think we've addressed it from that perspective. But the other perspective that I want to make sure it's addressed from is the legal perspective, and I've made mention a number of times going back to last fall, including on a call with town council, that I want us to amend the 1993 air rights agreement, so that we have it expressly in writing with Mast Dot, that the town has the option down the road, if it wants to, to reopen Adam Street. There had been talk about an easement, there were different options that were floated, but I want to be sure that we're following through on that. And I don't know, Bill, if you can give any update on whether there's been any discussion with Mast Dot about that, because I haven't heard anything.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm almost getting ready to volunteer to work on that myself, if, because I don't want it to fall off our radar, and the future.
No, we, we had that discussion with Federal Highway this morning, and they are 100% behind us in keeping that easement, that transportation easement for the old roadway in place.
Okay, but that's different than amending the air rights agreement with Mast Dot, right?
So I asked that question specific.
Because an easement is not the specific issue that, I mean, that's what, Bill, you had referenced, an easement, but the discussion that Mike Dennehy and I had with town council back last fall was about amending the actual air rights agreement itself, not just trying to get an easement, but actually preserving the ability to reopen the street.
So, just to follow up to your question, because I've noted that since the night you brought it up in a conversation that Mike Dennehy and I had with town council two weeks ago, I specifically, that was my, this was my specific, and he used the term, the transportation use landscape, that he felt that that was enough. Now, because I specifically brought up what you, you know, should we go beyond that and amend the 1993 agreement, and he has not got back to us, he... amend the 1993 agreement, and he has not got back to us, he, any other way other than how it's written, and then we followed up today, this morning with John McMahon, again, but going back to your concern, that's been my concern, because you brought it up, I never thought of it till you brought it up. I called Michael, we called John, put this on John two weeks ago, and, and he, he made specific reference to this term, transportation hardscape use, but I'm fine with, if you want to follow up yourself with him on this, I'm.
That just hasn't been communicated to the boards, I wasn't aware that you had that conversation.
So that's just, I was going to say that anyway, I had, this is just.
So when you, I just want to be clear, where are you referring to transportation?
So on page, I don't know the page, under Adams Street evaluation, the line, there's a note, it says, to maintain this area as a transportation use hardscape, i.e. not green space.
Right, that's part of the discussion we had last fall, but.
Right.
But that, so that would, in other words, what that's going to do is just.
I understand.
Right.
What that would do is, you know, the current practice, we'd have it in place where we're not covering it with grass, we're not planting trees on the old closed section of Adams Street, but there's nothing, there's nothing memorialized anywhere, and that's where I think we need the air rights agreement amended, so I do want us to pursue that.
So, I would like to add that probably 18 months ago, maybe even two years ago, when we first showed the concept that had the connectivity where Adams Street exists for the bike and pedestrians, we spoke with MastDOT right-of-way, and said, how do we maintain that as a transportation easement? And it's, we've done this on numerous projects before at Howard Stein Hudson, when it comes to the right-of-way process, making sure that it does not become parkland and that there is a transportation easement that can be used for transportation uses in perpetuity. They were on board with that. At the time, the project manager kind of overrode the decision to go any further with that, and then there was some back-channel conversation with federal highway, and then there was the Frank one had this morning, and it sounds like with your, with your backing, the board, with federal highways backing, and with the right-of-way department of MastDOT, we should be able to make this happen. And in order to maintain transportation use and not make it a park, all you really need is the transportation easement from previous history that I've done. It would be belts and suspenders to amend the air right, and definitely let's get legal counsel involved, and we'll assist you in any manner you can, but I think, we as designers are, and I believe you got federal highway in the right-of-way section of MastDOT, on board saying that that's the right thing to do going forward.
Yeah, my concern is 30 years from now, you know, the same people are not going to be around, a lot of us are going to be gone at some point, whether it's, whatever the circumstances are.
I asked 50.
But I want to, I want to make sure that we have something in writing so that.
Yeah, understood.
Future boards of selective, future town administrators can, can actually pull up a piece of paper and see that it's, what was done in 2018, 2019 was to preserve the right to do that, so that's.
Right.
You know, I just, to confuse you, because the word has jumped to Bridgette, mine is the part of engineering. John McMahon has said that amending the agreement is fine with him, fine with federal highway.
He didn't say that today, though. I talked to him today, he did not say that.
Well, I've, I've been discussing it several times, and I'm pretty sure he agreed to amend the agreement. And by the way, MastDOT commissioners are also signatories to that agreement, so I think we could cover it with both of you.
Yeah, I think we have to do that.
So Katie, just one additional, just for everyone's information, these construction plans, they cannot advance without right-of-way plans being recorded at the Registry of Deeds and reviewed and accepted by federal highway and MastDOT. That's part of the standard process. That is what's going to memorialize your transportation easement in perpetuity, so that 50 years from now, they go to the Registry of Deeds and look at it, and it's because of this project it was memorialized.
Okay, well, that's, that's good, that's the first time I've heard that, but, but my only conversations, my only conversations on this have been with Town Council, so that's, you know, he's the one I'd want to make sure, we're going back to, to make sure we have all of our Ts crossed and our Is dotted. The third question I have, and it's, it's a little bit beyond this location, but I think we should look into it. Would a traffic light at Wood Street and Granite Ave be something that could be explored? If not through this project, then through our own town engineering, is something to be considered, is something that may help traffic flow? And this idea came up in a conversation I had yesterday.
Actually, we brought up a couple of times, yeah.
Yeah, not at Adams, Wood and Granite.
Yeah, Wood and Granite, by the gas station.
Right near the, yeah, gas station.
By the gas station.
It's a little bit beyond the scope of this granted, I mean, may, cost-wise and other reasons, it may not be something that can be done as part of this study, but I think it's worth looking into. The idea came to me from a former town administrator who I had a conversation with yesterday about, about the project.
I don't know.
I don't think you're going to answer it tonight anyway, but it's, in, in, just for the, everything that you, like you asked, I also asked about tonight, the new lights that go on, which they were, they're right on top of, the new lights that are scheduled from the upgrade at Squonham and Granite, Squonham and Adams, the new lights that are going in at Squonham and Adams, Brook and Adams, but that's another possibility as well, because I think, Bridgette and I might have talked about this, the only, or maybe John Thompson, the only hiccup to it could be, would be the fact that there are new lights going to go at Bassett and Granite, and would Wood and Granite be too close to it? But that's something, I think we should vet it out, I mean, I.
There's an evaluate, pretty standard evaluation from a traffic and operations analysis, you'd look at the distance between intersections, you look at the volumes, you take the counts, you do a warrant analysis, is the signal warranted? And that's all, that all can be done on short money, just do the evaluation for you at any time, anybody can do that, and, you know, that's where you would want to start if you're looking at a new intersection to be signaling.
Are you talking about the southbound part of Wood Street?
I'm talking about northbound.
Stopping it.
Wood Street and Granite, right at the gas station there.
Don't let cars go further forward on Granite Ave?
No, I'm talking about a signal, it's a stoplight, so that it would just help with the, with the flow of the Wood Street Bridge.
Yeah, so.
And the queuing a little bit better.
Going south. Stop the cars from going into that lane going south.
I don't think we're talking about stopping the cars, just, it's a light that would better control the traffic at that intersection to help the traffic flow over the bridge.
It would let you empty the square. You're talking about in the afternoon. PM traffic stopping on Granite Ave, cannot take that right until the light lets you in at the gas station.
Yeah, that would, that'd be one of the, one of the benefits.
That would actually work in that area.
Can you walk at that? We'll have them walk at that?
Yeah.
It's not, it's been discussed before, it's not, it's not.
It's not part of this project, but we should be able to do it. I'll have that discussion with Town Engineer and DPW Director and see what our next step to that is.
Great, thank you.
Can I just add one thing? I know they were looking at that intersection because there were some complaints that were coming, and that people that were leaving East Milton Square to try to go south can't get out because of the volume of traffic coming northbound on Granite Ave, they literally can't take that left from the, from the gas station.
At Wood Street?
Yeah.
In the morning.
To get, to get to the southbound side or head towards Colicott, Cunningham, whatever, it's just, there's a constant flow of, usually traffic getting off the highway and getting back on the highway, further up on Granite Avenue, so they are looking, into looking into that.
One unrelated to the signal that you were just talking about, this may sound a bit snippy, and I apologize for that, but just as far as Mr. Cronin's remark about Bridgette, our project manager not, not being up to date with federal highway, I just wanted to state that there's no one in this room that's more up to date with this project in the ins and outs of what's going on than Bridgette, and she's on top of all of it. Just wanted to make sure that that was stated for the record.
Thank you. Katie, anything else?
No, nothing else.
Mr. Farrington?
I have no questions, thank you, Richard.
None?
None, sir.
I'm going to come back to Mrs. Collins, but go ahead.
So, I, I think the, the other thing that people might benefit from understanding just a little bit about is why opening Adams Street isn't as simple as just putting a new light back in and letting traffic go through.
Okay, so there was a traffic and planning study, a parking and access study that was done, a circulation study that was done prior to the MastDOT contract, that had us recommend to the, to the town that Adams Street be closed to test the circulation, and that test was a successful test. And that was part of the functional design report, which is basically your, your engineering basis for advancing with the design that MastDOT reviews. And there's extensive traffic data, collection, analysis, design, that goes into the functional design report that MastDOT uses to approve the safety and operations improvements that are going to be advanced through the process. Like 50% of your time and budget is spent going through the MastDOT process, getting to 25% design, and it's an arduous process with a lot of coordination and review by various MastDOT agent departments, both at the district level, at Ten Park Plaza, maintenance operations, safety, landscape, ADA improvements, I mean, you name it, pavement design, they all chime in. And to get concurrence is a big task, because you go to design public hearing, you have a hearing, the public comments on the project, and provided that that public hearing goes well, and that it looks like that there's a reasonable consensus to move forward, you're now taking that engineering basis and turning into final design. To open up Adams Street, you have to redo all that evaluation because you're doing a different traffic circulation with different traffic volumes in the future, the improvements that are being made for bump outs and for lane allocations, they all have to get reevaluated and revisited, the signal timings all need to get reevaluated and revisited. You're starting over from scratch with a brand-new traffic pattern and circulation and data collection, and you're going to take that 50% effort in the project and do it all over again to talk about opening up Adams Street, and then many of the improvements that we've shown today don't have any reason to be included in the project, or they don't provide any benefit, because you now have cut-through traffic through the square as opposed to the circulating traffic where you're trying to create some additional pedestrian safety. You know, you open up Adams Street again, you're increasing speeds, right, right through the center of East Milton Square, and this is not a project that's about getting people through East Milton Square fast, it's about getting everyone through safely. And so that's why opening up Adams Street and redoing the signals and the timing starts us back at square one, which adds a lot of time and duration to the project beyond September of 2019 when that first earmark would expire.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, go ahead.
Just, just a couple of, very quickly, just to go back to Katie's question on the timing, so if we, if we hit the advertising, advertising date of January 2019, where does that put us in terms of completing, estimate for completing the project?
We haven't really done a detailed construction schedule yet. So at 75% design, which is what we're advancing right now, we would do what's called a cost-time determination, which is basically says how much cost and time will determine to construct this project. And this project is probably going to be one-plus construction seasons, you know, maybe you'll get a lot of the roadway improvements and the signals up in one, in one season, in one construction season, say from when it stops snowing to when it starts snowing, and maybe you'd have to look at rolling some of the landscape improvements into the following spring, so it's probably a one-to-two-year project, no more than two-year, I would, I would say.
So one to two years after January 2019?
One, yes, I would say one to two years from spring of 19.
From spring of 19.
Right, because it'll take, it'll take one to two physical years for the contractor to be on-site to do the work.
So between spring of '20 and spring of '21?
Yeah, I would say that by the end of summer of '21, you'd have the whole thing buttoned up and the contractor would be gone, and you'd have a nice new project.
Okay, and, and, and is there any way to, to move up the advertising deadline from January of 19? Is there any way to do that faster?
Uh, no, there is not, and you wouldn't provide much benefit either, because even if you moved it up a couple of months.
The construction.
You're still in the middle of winter, they're not going to start till May anyways.
Got it, got it, got it, good point.
People forget about the construction seasons.
You know, that, that, that's the reality situation with the contractors, but, I mean, Bridgette and I and our team, we're under, under the gun to make sure it happens in January, anything earlier would probably be difficult.
Got it, got it. And then somebody said that the biggest issue was the money for improvements, because we don't have enough money for improvements from the remaining funds. How much more money do we need?
We are unsure at this time.
Okay.
We have about $360,000 that's available for additional improvements beyond the transportation improvements that are going to be constructed. We need to do the 75% design, we need to get the structural engineer on board, we need to identify with Rich through some, hopefully some additional comment or move forward with what we have, so we can actually nail down specific items that are going to be required for construction of the landscape improvements, put some costs associated with that. At the 75% submittal, we'll know exactly how much more money is needed, and then we'll strategize with the board and with Bill and Mike to make some strategic calls and look for some funding sources that could help augment the difference.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good.
I have one other one, just to follow up.
Go ahead.
When are we expecting to have the 75% design public meeting?
I was going to announce that tonight, but you can tell me what you told me, what you're thinking, how many weeks you need?
What'd I tell you?
It's like six to eight.
Yeah, it's like six to eight weeks to pull together the 75% design once we have the final signed contract from federal highway to advance the final design of the project. There is no other required meeting with the MastDOT process to host another public meeting, but of course, we'll do whatever's needed with the board and come, talk to you whenever you need to.
There isn't a requirement for a 75% meeting, there's a requirement for a 75% filing.
I didn't hear the last word, Bill.
The 75% is a filing, it's not required for the meeting.
Right, it's a submittal with engineering drawings and specifications and a cost estimate and right-of-way drawings, that, that's the requirement, to have a meeting and discuss it, not required, but that doesn't mean that those don't happen in case that there is additional comment and discussion that needs to continue. But there's nothing required.
Okay, I guess just, it's been talked about a lot, so my, I thought that.
I'm fine having it, I'm okay having it.
Design hearing was required, or a public meeting anyway, but.
I thought it was too.
If that's not the case, that's not the case.
I found that out tonight earlier, that it's a filing, but I, I'd be happy to do whatever the board wants, whatever the other members want, if we want to have another meeting, I'm fine with that. You, anything else?
Nothing else.
So, absent your concern, which has been my concern since you've brought that up on, and that, and I think we should follow up with John one more time, and, but we did have the discussion with John McMahon this morning, we did have that discussion with John, and that has weighed on me since you brought it, because I never thought of that, until you raised that issue that night back in, was that October of 2017?
Around that time, yeah.
Right, all right, so, absent that, and that remaining an issue, I've looked at this now for almost 10 years, and as Bill remembers, when I was Chair of the Traffic Commission, I was probably the last one to go along with the concept, the idea when this concept was first brought to us by Bridgette and Howard Stein Hudson, but as I've looked at it over and over again, I've looked at several things. A, the flow of traffic, which today is, I think we all know, and having now moved there and for full disclosure, lived there, lived there now, the traffic enhancement improvements, the signalization are things that are so critical for not just the effective movement of cars, for the safety of pedestrians, and for the safety of bicycles, which grow and grow each and every day. From a speed perspective, many people have said, and I've heard even members, some of the members have said, well, let's just open Adams Street, and I've thought about that, because in the square, the two greatest dangerous, danger intersections in the old design with traffic flowing eastbound on Adams Street are Granite and Adams, where traffic can flow unfiltered from San Agulhas heading east towards Quincy, and would regularly speed to try and beat, because once you beat that intersection, then you're pretty much home free to get out of the square. The second thing is that the other dangerous intersection, which most people know is dangerous already today, which was even more dangerous before, is in front of the post office, because many people try to cross there to get across over to go to Fitness Unlimited, to Brugge's. It becomes even worse, because now cars are trying to go just, they don't have to sort of go straight or left, they could go, they could go straight ahead, so I've just, I've come to accept this as it's designed, I think it is safer for the residents, I think it's safer for pedestrians, I think it's safer for everyone there, and I think that is, and I pressed Mark pretty hard tonight again when we were alone, is to vision this two years from now, how much more effect would be compared to today, and having stood out there with Jack Calarvo and having seen them with a stop watch and trying to gain a second or two seconds, we really need these improvements. And, and that also brings the efficiency with it. The final thing that I want to talk about is with regard to the deck, is about flexibility. We can't give everybody everything they want, but it's not very flexible for use, for the common users now, and what I mean by that is, for the Chamber of Commerce, one of the big, oh, the biggest thing that takes place right now is, is your Halloween. takes place right now is, is your Halloween event every year. It shows that people will come and use that, that location when you create something for them. And even for you to do that, it's not very flexible, a consumer safe, a consumer friendly for you to do it. I believe the way we're going in this, in this avenue would do so. It's never going to be the gazebo with things there all the time, but for special events, it does give you that flexibility. It also gives flexibility to the MAC, which is an air conditioner, our art center, and so they don't often have things in the summer, and now you give them the possibility to have something outside adjacent to their location. So I think these are some of the things that we need to look at, that we need to take into consideration that our designer has done for us in this. And I think in the end, we want to have something that's better for everybody in this community, and that's what we're trying to do. And that's why we've had all these meetings, and as I said to my colleague, Ms. Collins, if we want to have another one at 75%, I just want to get the best that we can get for this community with what we have faced. If we have to find more money, then we're, and I said this to Michael and to John McVan this morning, then we'll find more money. I think it's a lot more money, but we'll find a way to do it. But with that, I'll, I thank you all for coming. I'll open up to the floor to anyone that has a question or comment that's here tonight, that's come here. No one? Yes, ma'am.
Should I identify my-
No, why don't you come right up here and just sign this, and then you can do it when you got to the microphone. Just pull the microphone a little closer to you two when you start to speak. Thank you.
I've been a teacher for many years, but this is my debut in government, so-
We'll take a lesson, we'll take a lesson tonight.
I'll take my glasses off. My name's Eleanor Hearn, and I am a retired Milton High School teacher. I'm also a grandmother, and I'm a new town meeting member from Precinct Eight. I'm just about a, a lifetime member of Milton. I grew up in East Milton Square, and I currently live, I've lived there for 38 years, two miles from the square. So this is my question, when, and I hope I have my streets right, so please correct me if I'm wrong on this. Coming down from, we are coming down from Boulevard Street from Edgehill Road.
Into the square.
Yes, into the square. And I pass through here probably once a day, if not more. And my question is this, if we are coming down Boulevard Street on, onto East Milton Square, and we're passing through Bryant Street, the cars that are coming by the post office that are taking a left are in a queue to turn before the lights turn for them. So we are not getting much of our time.
Right.
Is anything going to happen here that will, you know, with the synchronization of lights, or?
Yes.
Exactly that. It's synchron, synchronization of all of these lights. It's, the lights are talking to each other. I mean, I made a comment earlier about, we're changing the lights up at St. Agatha's at Brook Road. It has an effect down here on Adam Street at Granite Ave. Whatever we do here has a ripple effect that comes out.
Mm-hmm.
By changing those lights, I mean, one of the things that the chairman made a comment about is in front of the post office. This picture actually has three lanes in front of the post office now. If you go back 12 years ago, there were five lanes in front of the post office, so that cars did come whistling through there. The idea is slow the cars down. It's not to stop them, it's to slow them down, put them into a queue, and move them around. Yes, that light at the post office will actually talk. We're actually talking about taking, making Edgehill right on the other side of the post office, making that a one-way so that you go up. That would remove all those cars that are trying to jump the line, run around the Shell station, come down Bryant Ave, and shoot through, and not have to wait on Boulevard. At the same time, we're taking, we're looking to take and make Boulevard three lanes that will come into the square. When you look at the lot, at Boulevard as it comes across the highway, it's three lanes. So, yes, we are increasing some of those roads, we are having new lights, and yes, all of the lights will talk to one another, so that it actually moves the queue through, not individual cars.
That's an improvement.
We hope so.
I'm in, I'm in favor of having Adam Street open. That's how I grew up, with it open. And to me, it seems like the best way to go, but I'm happy to hear about the synchronization of lights. That, that post office pedestrian area is terrible. Right now, it's, we, we can't even cross that street to get over, like, to the Blue Hill Ave side, because the lights, the cars don't show.
Part of that is the light's in the wrong place. The light is, it's probably 50 feet in front of where it should be. I mean, people come around the corner, and the light's up there, the line's here, I'm only going that way. So they just keep on going. Good luck trying to cross the street.
Yes.
This has safety islands, this has a defined crosswalk, and the lights are with the crosswalk. Therefore, the lights will be where the stop line is, not 50 feet ahead. You're looking at, when you stop at the post office now, you're looking for a light that's on the end of the island, which is the, the deck area. That's not where that light should be. The light should be backed by the stop lines. We, we know that we're repositioning and realigning all of it.
Those sound like two improvements. I'm glad I came.
More than two. Count out each one of these intersections in yes.
Yes, okay. You answered my questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Mr. Cronin, do you have a question?
Comment.
Comment? You want to come up?
Yes.
You may not be as nimble, but you're just as sharp. I'll give you that.
Thank you. But I want you to know that Matt Garrelleese and I are both civil engineers, graduates from Tufts together, so that we, we agree on almost everything.
Same.
I am John Cronin, retired town administrator and Precinct Four town meeting member. It has been my lot to have observed this site from before the southeast expressway was dug over 60 years ago. After a long, a long struggle by a town meeting-created mitigation committee, the result was a landscape park on both sides of the Adam Street Bridge, and the town was pleased. An agreement with the Federal Highway Administration was required, and it was signed by both the Board of Selectmen and Mast dot Commissioners. It was a pledge to preserve, protect, and maintain the park. This is not a secondary obligation, Mr. Chairman, and you cannot brush it off as I can be. It's an obligation that the town has. And I'm pleased that we have Halverson on as our landscape designer, that they have done a wonderful job on numerous projects, but most commonly recognized as the Green Light in Boston. Over the past few years, alternative ideas for the park have been considered. Misunderstandings and mistakes have plagued and delayed what should have been straightforward decisions on those considerations. Today, I am confident that the new five-person Board of Selectmen will make appropriate and expeditious decisions and put Congressman Lynch's over $2 million in East Milton earmarks to work.
So I have a question.
No charge for questions.
You never charged me yet. So my one question is, what do you think of the current po-, I know, I know, I know where you are, you have a great, a very good understanding of the flow, the efficiency, all the improvements. What do you think of the current design, the new design that they've given to us? What would you add, subtract? What do you-
Well, first of all, I want to compliment Howard Steinadson, an excellent engineering firm, for they, they work on the traffic lights and on the bump outs, on the bike and pedestrian safety aspects of it. I hate, I look at this drawing, and I see the lawn landscape area. To create that, the contractor has to rip out all the-
Right, I get that.
-trees and shrubs that are there, which, that doesn't make any sense at all to me. And of course, you know that I'm not a big advocate of a gathering point on this park. That was not what, what was, what the town intended when they, they wanted a landscape. This was, the Canyon was an ugly as sin-
I remember.
-situation. It was terrible. And everybody complained about the, how ugly and terrible ugly it was. So the committee, you know, which included the Terry McGovern, the chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, and Harry Osborn, who owned the, was now the-
Fitness Unlimited.
-property. I mean, Dave Gallow, the dentist, I mean, all these people, even the square, as well as the community, on the committee, wanted to make it something very nice, nice to look at. Not to picnic on, not to have sandboxes on, and not to have gatherings on. Thank God, the, the Halloween and Christmas events that are under the supervision of the police, police do a great job, blue lights and everything. Parents are very careful with the kids. I mean, Bill Clark has said, you know, maybe we should put railings, fences around it, so the kids don't fall off during these events. Well, I don't think we should have too many events there. The Christmas event is wonderful, but they, they're only there for a short time, and they go to every park. I mean, it's, it's, it's reasonable to control it. It's not an idea, I mean, clients sit so, what was the food trucks? Remember somebody said yesterday, we should have food trucks here. I don't know, with the little, little restaurants around the corner, coffee shops, think about that idea, but that's crazy. So anyways, that's where I stand. I would hope that we could keep the vegetation there as far as possible. I know Halverson will do a good job in coming up with additional plantings. And I hope that we can maintain the concept that was him and her over many years, between the 1959 opening of the, of the Canyon, and the 96 one, we finally got an agreement to, to beautify it. So, there we go. You're doing a great job. Keep it up, so.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Thank you for coming. Anyone else? Mr. Toma, you're in the back there. He must have something to say. I knew you'd be here tonight. Mr. Ellett, anything, Darrell? Anyone? Members of the board, anyone else? Motion adjourned. Thank you all, and we will keep you, be lucky within six to eight weeks, I would think we'll be scheduling a 75%. But, oh, here's the last thing I want to say. So I received an email, some of the members of the board got it, about soliciting ideas, additional ideas about the design for the park area. I don't know after meeting with our designers tonight and our architect, if the time will allow for that, but I do think we have time that we could, if anyone has any other additional comments, that-
Keep sending them.
Keep sending them to us, yes. Keep sending them to us. And we do have time in that, in that eight-week, six-to-eight-week window. I mean, vet out the things that we need to vet out here, just as Katie asked a question tonight, and that question came up before, about Wood Street and Granite Ave.
Keep sending them. My email is out on all of those articles, so.
Okay. Thank you all. We are adjourned. Thank you.